Just a heads up.
The audio last time?
Honestly, I'm not sure. Um, I was playing with it today and some of the settings got switched and it's fixed now.
Did you have anybody sign?
Hello.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how you doing, Brian? I'll say it now because things always go when people can get out of here. Have a happy new year.
Thank you.
Good holiday.
All of you here. Yeah, I should. I'm at six fifty, six twenty. But you guys usually finish before that anyway.
Yes.
You're usually pretty efficient. So what else is there?
We try, yeah.
Um, Jen, have I sent you that?
She did. And we discussed that Mr. Martin's business here is still in the area.
Yeah, as long as they have the D A. originals or if we don't see.
That's like a lot. Well, then to me, I think what you're saying, well, you're actually.
Yeah, awesome. That was a good one. Do you think?
We actually just told them, I said, it wasn't all these.
Okay, so you got it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Exactly. I mean, even the mayor didn't sign it. I think mayor was the. I find it Russian.
Well, they said it had to be. We were trying to that certain case or something, which I think would do. So I guess about.
That's the unit.
Was that? Yeah. So, uh, yeah, so she said the word with the same two words on it.
Sure.
Yeah, no, it was just. Yeah, yeah, sure, you got the other part.
Hi, what's happening? See you. Is everything?
Nice guy.
Good. Hi, Mark, how are you?
Hey, John.
Hi, how are you? See you.
Hello.
Like your hat?
Thank you.
Very colorful, very nice. All right, I was gonna come to your party. Except now my wife is having eye surgery, so I'm gonna help. Yeah, but nothing serious, just feel like a. Isaac's like this.
How are you? But she has glasses on like those.
She has copilot glasses, but she's not wearing her contacts.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's, uh, she has some feeling. Uh, we may hit our job in later. Good work. But seriously, um, so I have to leave the girl on.
She's like her driver, you know?
What's that?
Like her driver.
This guy's looking for a personal injury. Looking for work, looking for. I saw Brian, Brian.
Is that Isaac? Yeah, I can't hear.
We're full of trouble with this. Today's party is like, I actually.
Yeah.
That's true. Cause you guys are true. I crash parties. In fact, I got the little down today in the D A.'s party, depression that Friday.
Oh.
It's fine.
That I can.
I know.
About the crashing, yeah, I'd be there. Yeah. So the D A. party up there. Here's your degree back in the day, yeah. It was crazy. Those things raised, you remember about Hudson House?
Now, like, yeah. And I'm like, that would be that.
At the end of the meeting, Sharon has the vouchers that we need to get. Signatures on, Donna's been asking the last couple of months.
Five oh one.
All right. Okay. Yeah, Isaac's never. All right. Isaac's never seen those before. Uh, so nine U D's.
Okay.
Water. It's just the initials. Everybody's good?
Yes.
All right. Hello, welcome to the Village of Airmont Board of Trustees Meeting, December fifth, twenty twenty-two at five P M. I'll call them into order, and for everybody, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please proceed.
Mayor, you done?
I'm present.
Justice Brownie.
Present.
Justice Wright.
Present.
Justice Bumbe. And W. A. R. Jackson.
I'll make a motion. Um, we have a local law to regulate short-term rentals of residential dwellings. Um, make the motion to open up the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, would anybody like to speak this evening?
This is specifically about the short-term rentals. We should look about it.
Okay. All right, if no one would. Um, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearing is closed. Um, and we'll open up public comments limited to three, three minutes per speaker. Would anybody like to speak?
There is someone in the person before.
The gentleman?
Yeah. I think he was out here.
Someone in the hall. If he comes right in.
Um, I think.
I'll be late. Out.
Unless he wants to go first.
Answer the question. Thank you.
Hi, Daniel Ian, eighteen and Avenue. I'm looking at the, um, the shade. Fins once. Eight is the window covering. Six hundred forty-five dollars. Is that correct? Sharon or somebody, Sharon, does he got the bid?
I think it was six thousand.
It says six four five and zero. Oh, it does not. That says six hundred forty-five dollars.
You know, we should just accept that if that is six hundred and forty-five, we should just accept.
Well, no, I was gonna say something. I, are they actually bidding on the same thing? That's my issue, okay. All right. It's only six thousand four hundred. Okay, it says six four five zero, so that's what my question was. Um. But how do we know A Z covering is, um, bidding on the same thing that the other people did? Because. Theirs is not itemized. It says, um, solar shades. Uh-huh. And that also says solar shades. Well, let's go to lines to go. They have a lot more itemization. So how do we know that they're bidding on?
That definitely seems to be their process. We had them come in, we had them measure, look at the windows and bid on it.
How do you know that they're bidding on the same things, Mr. Mayor? That's my question. If it's not itemized. We don't. Okay, all right, so I don't know who accepted this bid, but maybe in the future, you wanna make sure that they get itemization so. People know what you're making a decision on. Um, I had sent, um. An email to Mr. Nugent. Hadn't gotten a response back, Mr. Nugent, regarding, um, how the R F P. and the bids to pave the road was noticed. You said you'd follow up, and then I sent you an email.
I'll follow up. I'm not gonna do that right now.
You said last evening you were gonna follow up, then too busy?
I'm not the only one to vote public comment, just for you to comment. Okay?
You're taking a, a lesson from Skype and Gil?
No, that's actually the way it's supposed to be. It's not question and answer. It's supposed to be public comment.
No, it's actually like.
Actually.
Don't interrupt me, it's my time. It's my time.
Well, we'll say we did, we did make a board decision that the board is actually supposed to wait here, everybody's comments and respond at the end of everybody's comments, not just the person speaking in front of us at that time. So I just want, yeah, if you're not aware of the rules. That I know you love, love the rules and how they should be.
I don't have pub with rules. Most of the rules are not followed around here. Let's not miss around here, okay?
Yeah, give her another minute, I don't wanna.
I'm not gonna ask from anybody. That's fine. As long as that a break in the law, that she must pass.
Would anybody else like to speak this evening? Okay, uh, in that case, we'll close public comment, move on to the agenda. So we have the resolution to authorize the removal of the dead tree located adjacent to the parking lot, um, of the Village of Airmont in the amount, um, so we have three estimates. So we have one estimate at two thousand nine hundred and fifty. We have one estimate for thirty-nine, three thousand nine hundred and fifty, and one estimate for fifteen hundred.
I would just like to add that the fifteen hundred is actually for two trees.
Okay.
Fifteen hundred, there's been two trees. And, and it's not taking the stump out, but we're at stump riding as well.
Right, right. But it is cutting the stump down and.
No.
If we act, well, yes. Well, I was gonna say, well, we're not, yeah, they're cutting it low to the ground. If you wanna remove the stump so you can actually put a tree in, you actually have to have it pulled, which we could go on in the springtime, but right now that would get the tree that's split, right, that, you know, going down and it's further splitting.
Right.
Which is why we have the parking lot cut off right now.
Some rounding is fair enough.
Yeah, but, well, this wouldn't let us plant another tree if we pull the stump out. So, so that's why I say, I wouldn't even, you know, this doesn't have the stump grinding in it, which I'm fine with, because if we wanna put another tree.
When is this consult? Oh, oh.
The other one is, one, 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 one did for three hundred dollars, but I think we're fine.
If that's not right.
Yeah, I'd rather pull, I'd rather pull the, pull the stump. Right, and plant another tree, hopefully, you know, replace the tree at some point. So, all right, um, anybody have any?
They're paying prevailing wage, they're supposed to be paying prevailing wage. Only, uh. Bellville has to, they're paying prevailing wage. That's why theirs is more.
Actually, Evergreen is more. And they don't, they don't, they're not telling us whether they're paying for the wrong wage.
E, eh, pay, 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 let's not.
Oh, yeah, no, they don't, no, they have fifteen hundred dollars, I don't write down they're paying.
Where does it say on Evergreen?
Evergreen, that's what I said, it doesn't, it just says, um, doesn't say they're paying, but they're all more offensive than, they are more offensive than the Bellville, that's the thing. One can assume, but you cannot assume until you find out.
Well, we really shouldn't say that.
One, well, we can assume until we find out.
All right, does anybody have any objection if we want with the lowest bid?
There, um.
I don't think that's the.
It's an emergency, can't park there. Would I something on shirt?
Oh, yeah. That's actually a important thing.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
You can always accept that subjects to prevailing wage, if it applies, I don't think it's a solo or, you know. Do you ever make it subject to prevailing wage, and then if not, you can go to the next one.
Okay.
If they're not paying. But there are exemptions to that, if like it was a solo, okay, that would, or a tree, and we will be by themselves.
Yeah. For capital, group, that is probably on the way.
I mean, it'd be an adequate, but I, that, it doesn't say, so I don't know what these proposals, maybe just, you know, whether it includes prevailing wage. But you can always approve it. Subject to, um, the payment prevailing wage, if they tell you they're not, then you, you know, have to go to one of the others.
Okay. All right, so I'll make, uh. Or, or would they be able to just raise it to prevailing wage?
Well, you gotta see if that would be.
Your doctor. Different bit.
So someone leave the tree up there also. All right, so, um, okay, um, I would say we will, uh, go with, well, I mean, does the board have any say in who they'd like to go with?
Motion for the name, right?
No, we, we have, we're still in the discussion.
Okay, we're still in the discussion.
Or, still in the discussion with some.
Yeah.
Uh, we have one for, for, uh, a sale for an old business.
Right, but that's what we just, I don't know whether that includes prevailing wage, which we can put in there, you know. If it doesn't, if it doesn't, then we could go to the next, then, then we could go to the next lowest bid, which would be Bellville. So we could, we could just word, we could just word it that way.
So we can just, uh, we just wait till we get, uh.
Well, we can't really wait because it is an emergency condition, that's why we have the parking lot cut off because the tree is split and I don't, you know, don't want anybody to get hurt with the tree possibly falling on anybody or, or creating any damage to the, creating any damage to village hall if it falls on village hall or somebody's vehicle. More person.
Can we accept, uh, uh, sale landscaping and tree service pending if they use prevailing wage, so apply, and if it does apply, if it does apply, then we can. Can we go prove Bellville?
Yeah, I, that's what I was suggesting.
Yep, okay. So, um, I'll make that motion, I'll make that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna go with the lowest bid, if they're paying prevailing wages, if not, we would go with the se- second lowest bid, which would be Bellville, which does say that he is paying prevailing wage rates. So one bid is for fifteen hundred for the two trees, the other bid does not include the two trees and is at two thousand nine hundred and fifty. For the removal of the tree. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Depending on.
Was that a, aye? Okay, so it's four up. Next, we have the motion to set the public hearing for twenty twenty-three for a local, local law to amend the village code to make initial building permits valid for two years on January third, twenty twenty-three at five P M. I'll make the motion, do I have a second? All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, trustee Pesante?
Yes.
Okay. Four up. Next, we have authorizing of the lines for village hall, uh, to be reimbursed, so I'll make the motion, and do I have a second, and then we can decide who we're, who we're gonna put in there? Second, buddy. Okay. So we have three companies. Three different bids. One's at six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. For A Z window covering. Lines to go. Their factory direct price was eight, eight, their total was seven thousand nine hundred ninety-four thirty-six dollars. And shade control window treatments is four thousand three hundred and ninety-five. Was it twenty? Quanti twenty-eight?
I have the other question.
Okay.
Yeah, quantity, um, shade, shade, uh, control window treatment is twenty-eight. The quantity on A Z is twenty-six. And if I'm reading. Line to go quantity is twenty-five thirty-one.
So Brian, the reason why they do that was because each company came with their own person who measured the shade, and some of their factories could create a shade that was long enough for our longest windows, or it had to be split.
So it'd be one line instead of two.
Right, yeah, I mean, these are all one, but they're a figure.
But it's the measure, space that counts. Less you know.
So basically, it's all the same cover, it's all the same property. And the only thing for lines to go is that they just don't say solar shade, or yellow one to do.
I think it's a roller shade.
It's a roller? Ah, yellow one says solar.
Right.
But roller shades does sound.
Correct.
All right. So, I mean, I think we should go with the lowest bid, four thousand three hundred and ninety-five. Anybody? Anybody think differently?
Sharon, what was your, when they came, what were you feeling?
I mean, they all do the same kind of shade, all provided solar, I think we should go with lowest.
Any other questions? Does somebody recommend anybody else? Okay, so, so I'll recommend shade control windows for forty-three ninety-five. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those four up. Next, we have resolution accepting the proposal to repair and spackle the paint, the new windows and two offices upstairs in village hall. So we have a couple of estimates here, so I'll make the motion, do we have a second, and we'll fill in who we decide on? Okay. So. Three different estimates, one at eighty-eight hundred. One at eleven thousand one hundred and fifty-one forty-nine. And one at fourteen thousand five hundred.
Okay, and this is, this is for?
Upstairs, uh, for the fire.
Fire, that's basically, fire expector over.
Right.
Okay.
And this is money to be reimbursed for the D A's.
For that?
Yeah. So, I mean, my feeling again is to go with the lowest bid, eighty-eight hundred. Which is semi-construction.
The only thing is, I mean, just estimate standpoint, your fixed frame around windows, the price can change after demolition. Doesn't say anything about painting, doesn't say anything about factling.
That wasn't included, I, I spoke that, I mean.
Right, yeah, right. I mean, if something comes back and it's, you know.
I think the most detailed.
Yeah, you won't, yeah, if anybody watches any home, home T V show on fixing up a house, you never know until you get into the work.
Yeah.
I mean, if something comes up that hasn't.
I think manpower has the most detail of the law.
Maybe what happened most.
Yeah. Which company was that?
Uh, Manpower Construction.
You can always accept that lower line.
Three thousand dollars.
For the condition, we strike that additional, whether it's from our additional laws, depending on the price, and that's the price. That's up to the board. If you don't want that open ended, you know, payable.
Yeah, that's my end. I understand.
All right.
I understand, but you know how.
All right, so, all right, so let's go with, let's go with that, we'll accept Sammy Construction's bid, as long as he's willing to remove, the price can change after demolition. If he goes with the price as a price, if he does not wanna strike it, then we will approve manpower for eleven thousand one hundred fifty-one forty-nine cents. Everybody's okay with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the resolution authorizing the purchase of furniture from Complete Office Furniture for the village hall in the amount of five thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and five cents. To be reimbursed for the village through the D A's grant, this is, this has come from a state contract bid. So we only have the one. So that would get us the furniture for upstairs for those two offices too, so that we would have completed all, all the offices. Yep. So I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Got any discussion? Are you approving bid, right? Yes.
Ah, right.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Pesante?
She said aye.
You said aye? Sorry, I just not heard that. Four up. Next, we have the resolution approval of the treasury abstracts of December fifth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of four hundred and five thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Trustee Pesante? No? Okay, so that went, was approved three one. Next, we have the resolution approving the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on November seventh, twenty twenty-two. I'll make the motion, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three one. Next, we have the resolution approving the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. I'll make the motion, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three one. Moving on to discussion part, um, there was a request from a resident for a street light on Mountain View Avenue, um, I'm gonna, yeah. Unless anybody would like to shed any more light on the situation, I'm gonna ask Sharon if she could send out the questionnaire to, to the homeowners, no, no, I didn't, um, send out the questionnaire so that the board can make a decision on that. Then we also have a stop sign request on Twin Lakes Drive, we should send that, you know, I'll say the request should be to send that to the village engineer to see whether or not it's needed or necessary.
Twin Lake Drive, uh, at what, in a second, just.
I forgot what the letter said at the time, that was like.
Okay.
But this way we'll have it, you know, have the village engineer look at it and see. Okay. Does anybody have any further discussion, or? If not, we'll go on to old business, anybody have any old business?
No, very old business. Now, I, I, um, was talking, uh, one time about that big car over on the side of Airmont Garden, Airmont, um, uh, the fifty-nine, that is two, two, two. Okay?
That's not.
Um, I was told that I had to call for that.
Yeah, I called the state, uh, if you ever have.
Of the union?
And, uh, unfortunately.
The Bible still live.
The state, well, unfortunately, they, they do it when they're in the area. Unfortunately, they're not very quick to move, they have a lot of road, and it's not an excuse, it's just what it is, unfortunately, being in that business, it was, uh, they had a lot of road. So I will, uh, I will double and triple up for you, and I'll try to get that thing together. And that's, again, that's just me, just calling the state, just keep reporting it and reporting it. And, you know, until, you know, it's, it's one of those things until, you know, a rim gets bent, you know, and they kind of opens eyes, we, we don't want that. But I will call the, uh, the state, I did speak to them twice, uh, I will call them again and again.
Okay. What if how many citizens called this?
Absolutely, absolutely, and even on the website, even on the website, uh, the D O T., you know, state D O T. website, there's also, uh, a complaint sheet, you know, a complaint sheet, actually, a power sheet, uh, specifically, uh, I call just because I have another number.
Hey, Brian, would you send me the link to that, like, to Airmont email?
Yes, I can do it, yeah.
All right, so if we can help.
Absolutely, yeah, more people, yeah, more complaints, so, kind, you know, more heated, but, you know.
And, uh, also I have another, another concern here is. There is, um. There's a new daycare, um, later called the Dunkin' Donuts there. And, um. There's construction going on on, on that side of Dunkin' Donuts. We have one exit from the. We have one exit from there, from the complex there, for senior citizens. That's gonna be a nightmare there.
Is she more, is that where friend, where friendlies were, do you mean, like that spot?
No, I think she's talking about the Dunkin' Donuts at the gas station.
The back.
Oh, the gas station?
Yeah, the, the.
Right, because they're doing the drive-through.
The construction.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're doing the drive-through.
So that's gonna, that's gonna be quite a nightmare there. Quite a nightmare there, we got the throughway coming, coming out, we got people gonna drive behind that Dunkin' Donuts, we have ambulances, constant, fireworks constantly coming into the complex. What is, what is your intake, I wanna know what you, you think, as a board here.
I think it's, I think it's good that progress is being made, it's, the construction's gonna be done, and when the construction's finished, the road will be back open, but there, you know, there will be a little bit of, you know, a little bit of work done during the construction, that's typical of any construction, on any road.
Okay, so the, okay, so the concern is not the, the nightmare of the traffic that's been coming in and out of there.
I mean, the concern is of the traffic, but you can't, you know, but at the concern of stopping progress or stopping a business owner from improving his business, improving, you know, the quality of life for people, to be able, who, who wanna get their coffee, gotta drive through.
So the quality of life there should be the, the concern of the senior citizens, never run a cup of coffee.
Well, I mean, the road, yeah, everything went through the approval process.
Oh gosh, you just, you totally shocked me with that comment.
What, that, 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 the, that the building construction went through the approval process and was approved?
I just, I'm trying to get a point over to you about senior citizens living there, and you just owe me a cup of coffee, it's more than forty, just let's leave it there, let's leave it there, because there's nothing else to say.
I'll say as a, as a building inspector, and, uh, as our fellow building inspectors too, that all we can do is, we, they submit, and we go back, and they go back and forth, and we try, and it has to meet certain standards they have to go by, and you can't halt a project if they have the right to do it, it's, it's, it's a catch twenty-two, like you said. I understand it, but unfortunately, they have, they own the property, they have the right to do it, and, you know, there's the engineers and everything, have.
The planning board voted over the objection of a G M L from Rockland County, who had a lot of concerns about it, but they, so unfortunately.
That was a dry zone, that was a dry zone.
I had a lot of insurance that was gonna happen, I had fear was gonna, that was gonna come on, yeah.
You think that's bad, sure Chick-fil-A and Ramsay, that is famous across the country.
If we could just get, if we, if we could stay focused on, under the business, is there any other old business that you'd like to bring up?
No, not right now, can't be.
Alright, um.
I would just like, I just mind all, all businesses.
Okay.
If we, you know, seven o'clock is a prime time to start the meetings, if that's, can be something that could be achieved again, that would be appreciated, but, you know, that's just a comment, a comment that I need, you know, it's, it's.
Yep. Does anybody else feel that way?
Yes, I agree with you, yeah.
Okay, so, I feel, I happy with the five, are you happy with the five? So right, right, right now, right now, right now, we have a two-two, so we'll table it for another meeting.
That's good.
Thank you for bringing, thank you for, no, thank you for bringing it up, we, we polled the board, we're at a two-two, we'll, we'll table it, um.
Yes, but making residents should know it was changed, because Sharon did my stakes at seven.
Excuse me, but, you know what, let's not, let's not start entertaining, and that is nothing, you know, we, we are not gonna entertain questions from, from the gallery.
I wasn't expecting the answer.
I know, but it was nice for you to interrupt the meeting for that, so, thank you, we appreciate that.
You're so welcome, Mike.
Okay, well, alright, so, um, only bit of old business that I have is that the village has received a check, and we were reimbursed from the DASNY in the amount of two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. So I just wanted to, you know, thank everybody, um, involved in the project, and that the money has been reimbursed to the village, and the villagers, the villagers are not on the hook for the money, that has been stated at different meetings, so, okay, so. Moving on to new business, does anybody have any new business that they'd like to bring up? Now, I only have one bit of new business that I was just handed, uh, just at the start of this, we finally have an applicant for the litter patrol, so I'd like to go ahead and offer him the position, um, his name is John Downey, um, and if he accepts it and it's approved by Rockland County personnel, um, he will start with us, um, as soon as we can get his paperwork submitted through, so we have a litter patrol again. So, I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
So it's three, three one in favor, so, okay, alright. Nobody has any other, then, then I'll make a motion to adjourn.